Hello.
Oh, wow. Okay. Hey, everybody. So this is not an official meeting, right? So I don't need to take a quorum or anything. But we'll get started at 6:30. So this is one of, hopefully the only one we have to do. We got some good news in recently to help avoid some of these headaches. But we'll have this recorded for anybody who wants to see it and has questions going forward. But this is kind of an informal town hall to talk about the sewer bills this year. You know, I think we have on the dais, just to let everybody know, I'm going to stick up here, but we have, I want you guys to hear mostly from the professionals who actually handled this. We have the CFO, Ken Blum. We have the administrator, Andrew Casillas. We have Joe DiMarco, who's our counsel. We have Mike Baker, who's a special counsel. And we have Kevin Boyer, who's our borough engineer, right? So you'll get all perspectives of it from their view, not my political view or my mayor spin. You'll hear directly from them. So I think for those of you who haven't heard the spiel before, I think it's important to kind of talk about where we're at. For a lot of you, this will be review, but I will now hand it over to Andrew. Just so we will take questions also from everybody, right? Anybody who wants to. I think we'll do, what are we doing? How long?
Three to five minutes.
Three to five minutes, just to be respectful of everybody's time.
Go back around.
But yeah, if you want to go back around a second time, this is for you guys to ask questions if you have them. And hopefully you should also hit on the, yeah, go ahead, Andrew. Floor's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to hit on the issue that got us here and then get us to the point where a lawsuit was filed. And I'm going to pass it off to the attorneys and the engineer to kind of talk more about that. The main issue here is there is a connection. There's, so the Borough of Rosal Park has a separated stormwater and sanitary sewer system. So the best way to think about it is the water that runs in the street into the storm drains is separated from the water that goes through the pipes in your house and out to the street into the main. The City of Elizabeth has a combined sewer system where all the water goes into one and all that water is treated as one. Unfortunately, the Borough of Rosal Park and the City of Elizabeth have a connection point at the intersection of Galloping Hill Road and East Grant Avenue. This has been something that's known overtly to both municipalities for decades. There have been conversations that have gone hot and cold, on and off, for a very long time. I couldn't quote you how many years, but at least 20 years. And speaking with some former council people, it may be much more than that. And some of the discussions on some level have always been, we need to address this. Unfortunately, for the current predicament we're in, over the last 20 years, both the EPA and the DEP have begun to crack down on CSOs. So what a CSO is, it's a combined sewer outflow. It's the result of water outflowing from a combined sewer system of which the City of Elizabeth has. The problem is the Borough of Rosal Park contributes to that problem, right? It contributes to that regulatory issue that the DEP and the EPA are trying to mitigate with entities like the, municipalities like the City of Elizabeth. So because of these enforcement actions that have been happening to the City of Elizabeth, there have been advanced discussions over the last, you know, 10 to 20 years about how this is going to be addressed. There have been discussions over a period of time about payments from the Borough of Rosal Park to the City of Elizabeth, a complete separation project, capital improvement projects, and contributions from the Borough of Rosal Park to the City of Elizabeth. So there have been discussions and negotiations over a long period of time to try to get to an amicable breakpoint on the issue, an amicable separation of ways or an amicable understanding of how this was going to be treated because of these enforcement actions that are being made onto the City of Elizabeth by the DEP and the EPA. There was never a point where the borough thought there was a reasonable settlement inbound on that, right? There was never a point where the terms offered by Elizabeth in terms of a payment or a separation project or, you know, a quarterly utility type of payment from the borough to Elizabeth was feasible. There was never an acceptable time where we came to an agreement on it. So in earnest, the City of Elizabeth last year, in 2023, filed a lawsuit.
There's just a bit, you skipped one, I think, important thing that's going to come up later. So they, in between all of this, they also put in a flow meter between Rosal Park and the City of Elizabeth. That was about, what, 2013?
Right. 2013, 2014.
2013, 2014, they actually started to monitor the inflows from Rosal Park into Elizabeth to try and quantify what they think, what they think we were contributing to this. I think that's an important detail that I'll talk about later.
Right. Right. So there was a meter put in in 2013, 2014, to the mayor's point. And the idea of that was to meter the flows through that connection point to see what, you know, a rate payment, if we were going to do that in perpetuity to the City of Elizabeth, would look like for Rosal Park on a, on a monthly, quarterly, annual basis. The problem and the dispute that Rosal Park always, you know, was the sticking point was the amount that we would be paying to Elizabeth in perpetuity for the treatment of this stormwater. And then ultimately, on the secondary issue, in addition to the rate, the City of Elizabeth wanted to have Rosal Park pay for capital improvements in Rosal, in the City of Elizabeth that would be really of no benefit to Rosal Park for a system we didn't own and we would never own. Something else, you know, before we get to the point where we're talking about the actual lawsuit that was filed in May, the other idea that was always floated and obviously is in play now is a complete separation. The reason why Rosal Park didn't seize immediately on a complete separation is because of the costs involved with it. A complete separation is a, when I say a multimillion dollar project, it's, you know, at least a $10 million project. You're talking about running miles of pipeline, understate highways and rights of way. It's not a decision to be made lightly. And, you know, Elizabeth saying to the Borough of Rosal Park, you should just do this, is not something that we were really immediately welcoming to. And when I say "we," I don't mean just the people sitting up here or the people who sit up here two times a month. I mean, the Borough of Rosal Park, over the course of over a decade, was not really, you know, okay with that in the immediate. In addition to not being okay with the rates proposed by Elizabeth to just pay them to use the system like a user would use their sewer system. So all of that, there was no agreement made. Rosal Park, you know, we were trying to feel out how we were going to deal with it, talking about how we would finance the project, talking about how we wouldn't immediately impact the taxpayer by bonding the money, going to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank for low-interest loans, forgivable loans through FEMA, things like that. It was pretty much at that point that Elizabeth and Rosal Park were not talking, and Elizabeth then filed a lawsuit against Rosal Park, which said, you have been a freeloader on our system for 100 years plus. You are now causing us issues from a compliance perspective with DEP. They have permitting themselves that they have to comply with, with DEP and the EPA. And we are contributing factors to the fines and costs associated with their operation of their system. We, you know, I'll let, I'll let Mike take over in a second about the logistics of the lawsuit. Our going in position to this was, like a lot of you feel, I believe, is that
Go pound salt.
We haven't been freeloaded on your system. These were decisions made over 100 years ago through no negative action or adverse action of the people involved right now. The residents, past and present, made no decisions about this. This is just the virtue of the geography of the area, where you have a small borough connected to a large system. And it is what it is. We don't owe you anything for past usage. Maybe we can come to an agreement on future usage and we can talk about a disconnection. And I think that's where I want to leave it before I let Mike take over.
Yeah, I would say, and just to end cap it with some positive news, right? So we made the announcement today. So there's, there's one piece, there's two pieces directly affecting why your guys' bill was so high this year, right? One is the new rates that we have to pay, right, ongoing until we're disconnected, which is a smaller piece of that. The larger piece is they deemed we settled on a $4 million agreement to pay them in the rears. They initially asked for $40 million, I think it was.
What? 23, Mayor.
23, thank you. 23 mayors, going way back. So that is the big pain point that you guys are feeling. We did get emergency grant or state aid today to the tune of $3 million, which in large part should cover most of that. And that will be reflected in your bill. The hope is to get that reflected this year. There's obviously, you know, look, there's legalities to all of this to make sure that we can do that this year, to make sure that we can get it done in time. But you will feel that relief very soon based on the grant that we just got, which is very good news. Something positive from a very, very negative situation. So Mike, now take us into the lawsuit piece.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So in the lawsuit, it was filed in what's called the equity courts, common equity courts. It's different than what you see on TV or what you see with civil courts with a jury. There's no jury, there's a judge. And, there's no jury, there's a judge in equity. And the charge to the judge is to do what's fair and equitable between the parties. So you have a situation, as Andrew pointed out, where the allegation is, we're freeloaded and City of Elizabeth residents are paying to treat the runoff from Rosal Park. City of Elizabeth is receiving fines, is being ordered to leave from, to cut out additional water that's flowing into their system. And they're claiming damages and costs that they're incurring as a result of what Rosal Park is doing. Through the course of litigation, you have what are called case management conferences. We sit down with the judge and we talk about the case and where the case is going. And through that process, the attorneys and the judge, you get a feeling of where the court is going to go. Pretty early on, it was clear that the judge thought this was a case that should be settled, that the judge thought that this is a case where Rosal Park had to get out of the Elizabeth system, where Rosal Park had to pay going forward for Elizabeth treating our stormwater. And the big question was, how much would we have to pay for the decades of treatment that Elizabeth was doing, paying for on, on our water? Fortunately, there's only a 10-year statute of limitations, so we can only go back 10 years. And coincidentally, the metering system was put in about 10 years before the lawsuit was filed. As, as the mayor pointed out, we started at zero. We didn't want to disconnect. We didn't want to pay anything. They had a $23 million figure and they wanted us to disconnect as quickly as possible. When you're in court, you don't know where the decision is going to come down in the end after you have a trial. Could we have done it better? Sure. Could we have done worse? Sure. So we ended up somewhere in the middle where I think
Well, I wouldn't say somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Way below the middle point.
Right.
You know, we, we end up at 4 million, they were at 23 million. We started zero. We did way better than the middle. And through the course of this, the different routes were assessed by your engineer, Kevin will go into that. Elizabeth wanted the borough to use the most expensive route that would have cost probably $40 million. We wanted to use the least expensive route, but Elizabeth was not going to go for that and would have objected. And we ended up with a route somewhere in the middle that is not what Elizabeth wanted, not exactly what we wanted, but it's probably where the judge would have come down if we had had a, a trial. So the big issue in the settlement was coming up with, what is that back payment going to be? When you're in municipal government, one of the things that you need to do each year is budget, just like we all do in our home budgets. And what we don't like is uncertainty. And the uncertainty of whether the court would come back and say, 5 million, 10 million, $15 million is one of the things that forces you into, not forces you, drives you to finding a settlement because the CFO needs certainty, needs to know how to budget. The council, the mayor needs certainty, need to know how to budget. They need to know how to set rates, how to do financing going forward. So in the end, we got, I think, on the settlement at $4 million for back payment, a better deal than we would have gotten with the judge because we got to pay it over 11 years. I don't think the court would have ever allowed us to pay it over that length of time. So we've got a in-between route, not the most expensive, not the cheapest, but the one the judge was likely going to rule on. We got a much better monetary settlement over a much longer period of time than I think we would have gotten with the judge. And, and we're paying in what the court would have thought is fair and equitable, we're paying regular sewage rates going forward until we're disconnected, just like everybody else whose water or sewage goes into their system and they have to pay.
Yep.
Fair, Mayor.
Fair. And there's just two things I want to highlight, and then I want to have you talk about something else to front run, I'm sure, some of the discussion tonight. So I really want to make this abundantly clear. When they filed the lawsuit, going to court means one guy. It means the judge. This isn't, you know, Law &amp; Order where the people of Rosal Park could go out and plead their case. It would be up to the judge and his whim to decide. Rosal Park says they owe nothing. Elizabeth says they owe 23 million. The reason why you settle is because in all likelihood, what do judges do? They split the baby. It's a very realistic scenario where we went to court, i.e. this one judge, and he said, eh, Rosal Park owes 12 million, right? And that's what you're hedging against by settling, right? And once again, I want to repeat what we got today or this through the state, right? So that 3 million we got is going to cover much of that 4, and we have some other ideas to cover the final million, right? We have 11 years to pay it, so we have time to figure out that last million piece. I also want you to talk, Mike, so a lot of folks here, obviously, riled up about the situation, did their own work. I know we provided you with a lot of those documents, right? I know that we could probably go document by document, and, and I think that's not a great use of anybody's time. But in summary, a lot of those documents are newspaper clippings. None of those in your review are because of when it was done and based on the content of it. First off, your read on that. And second off, if there was a silver bullet, which there was not, the silver bullet we would have needed was a contract signed between the Borough of Rosal Park and the City of Elizabeth, and there was none, right?
Correct. There is no, no agreement that anyone has found. There's no, I know that the town has
Do you have a, come on up. No, just do this, John.
All right, let's do it now.
You have a, you, you have an agreement?
I have the lawsuit from 1915 with repair and rights stating that the Borough of Rosal Park put a sewer in, into a culvert, 1915.
Mike's behind you.
All right. Mike's behind me. Can't sit today. All right. So here's the bill, Union County versus City of Elizabeth. All right? I know I'm not a lawyer, but here's what it states. That, to your order, the duly-elected constituted Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Union have built and maintained a culvert across the road and is Galloping Hill Road at the point where said road is crossed by Grant Avenue, to said Galloping Hill Road at said point being the boundary line between the City of Elizabeth and Borough of Rosal Park. That the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Union, over 60 years ago, erected and constructed a culvert at said point and have maintained said culvert, rebuilding, repairing, and maintaining the same to the present time as duty-bound that they are obliged to do at the expense of the County of Union. That said culvert, so built and maintained by your order, is over an old runway, brook, and water course which has been in existence for upwards of 60 years and has, your order informed and believes from the time immemorial, through which the water flows from a watershed and springs in the Borough of Rosal Park. Rosal Park in 1914 built a storm sewer built a storm sewer over this creek. Here's a deposition from Noah Woodruff. I'm sure he's probably related to Mr. Woodruff, who's sitting somewhere in the audience tonight. All right, I will take my time.
Yeah, but, but, John, while you're looking up, right?
Sure.
So here's some bits that we know, right? So it's from 1914. I believe you've looked a lot of this documentation, Mike. So I think there's two issues with that, right? One is the fact that it happened in 1914.
Happened in 1924.
1924. Regardless if it's before 1945, when the State of New Jersey updated its constitution, it's a problem, right?
State court.
So go, go ahead.
State transfer court.
Go ahead, Kevin, please. Or, Mike.
So the lawsuit in 1915 involved overland drainage of water, and it involved Elizabeth putting up a concrete dam.
That's correct.
It, it did not involve, does not pertain to a underground sewer line
Actually, it does. In 1914, Rosal Park built their sewer.
They built a culvert. Culvert, you just said.
Culvert. Storm sewer.
Culvert is an open drainage.
Rosal Park built a storm sewer in 1914 along Grant Avenue from Hemlock Street to Galloping Hill Road. I have the bids, and I have who it was awarded to out of an engineering journal.
So, so Mike, regardless, I want to talk about, there's two factors that, that are at play here, regardless of the technicality of it was one specific culvert or a lawsuit broadly about stormwater, right? So I'll talk
Apparently, it's our stormwater that's going
Thanks, John. Yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me
It is, right? Okay.
What I'm, what I'm trying
You asked me to come up here.
Okay, got it. Yeah, settle in. Settle in. So, so, so I want to talk about 1923, right? So Joe and Mike, can we talk about if something was settled in 1923, can that not be relitigated today in 2024? And does that even hold up?
You have a lot of other factors that have come into play since then. Stormwater regs, treatment of sewage is totally different. Treatment of sewage was not, right? Sewage capacity.
Yeah, Chris, Chris, we'll let you go, but this is, John, John's up right now. Thank you.
The point I'm trying to make is, the world has changed and the regulations regarding stormwater have changed, right? So what probably may even assuming all that is correct, was a free system is now a paid system for Elizabeth. So a judge would probably say, that may have been true, if it was, and I'm not saying it is, and there was no cost associated with it, it doesn't mean that now you don't pay for it, but Elizabeth pays.
I don't want to be rude, but I feel like you were
It's not, it's not, well, you, so
We'll let you come up, Chris. We'll let you come up.
The, the point is, that's not hearsay, first of all. My point is that the fee system on stormwater and sewage has drastically changed from the early 1900s to 2024. So an equitable judge would sit there and say, water that is starting in Rosal Park is now going and being paid by residents of Elizabeth. And that is not fair, is the argument that Elizabeth makes.
Okay, so it's not fair for Elizabeth. We have a lawsuit that said that. Our culvert, here, right here, T. Foster Jones built a sewer from Hemlock to
Correct.
Okay. To Galloping Hill Road. It flowed out into a creek in Almora. Lawsuit. Let's go right back to it. Dig the creek right back in Elizabeth, open a sewer right after Galloping Hill Road, and put it right back on the ground. Let it flow.
And the State of New Jersey is going to tell you, you can't do that.
Why not?
Because the State of New Jersey is going to say they just updated, they just updated their stormwater regulations, and they're not going to allow you to do that.
Mike, I believe you have a similar
Mike, question for
Just real quick, Mike, I believe you have a similar situation that you dealt with with Rutgers University, I think you were talking about?
Another town I represent, Rutgers had refused to pay connection fees for decades. For my town, we sued them and just collected fees, got a judgment from the court for $2 million, $50,000 for 10 years of connection fees.
Okay. So during the lawsuit, that's not our issue, but during, during the lawsuit, were you provided with the proceedings of the Board of Public Works, City of Elizabeth?
No.
No, you weren't. So you didn't see anything that the city engineer talked about, city clerk, the Public Works Board? These documents, 1923.
I will tell you, those documents don't have a bearing on the sewer system. They relate to a culvert and repair and rights which are overland drainage.
They relate very much to a sewer system. There was a communication from the Almora Realty Company suggesting the joint construction by the city and Almora Realty Company for a 42-inch sewer in Grant Avenue from Galloping Hill Road to William Street in Elizabeth. Grant Avenue in Elizabeth is now Park Avenue, which goes into our Grand Avenue.
No one is contesting
They requested that. Hold on, hold on, let me finish.
Sure.
The Almora Realty Company received it. Tom Collins, city engineer. Tom Collins, city engineer. Honorable Board of Public Works, gentlemen, with further reference to the petition of the Almora Realty Company concerning construction of a storm sewer in Grant Avenue from the present terminus near Summit Road, Galloping Hill, to Galloping Hill Road. The property owned by the Almora Realty Company located on both sides of Grant Avenue, now Park Avenue, is traversed by an open ditch which carries surface water arising and coming from the property located in the Borough of Rosal Park on the westerly side of Galloping Hill Road. In order to develop this property, it will be necessary to eliminate the open ditch which crosses Grant Avenue at two places and substitute a storm sewer of 42 inches in diameter. If you now look at the Elizabeth sewer maps that they have on their website, there's a 42-inch concrete sewer that our sewer dumps into. They removed the ditch and put the sewer and connected our sewer to theirs. We did not do any connections to them. They caused this problem. Furthermore, this claims that it's a storm sewer in 1924. At some point between 1924 and now, they must have turned it into a combined sewer. Not our doing, it's their doing. Why are we paying any money to them? Zero dollars should be spent to them. They have, they state it right here that they closed in their open sewer to a 42-inch culvert, connecting our sewer to theirs. Now, if you guys, did you get this during the litigation? Because maybe you should go back to the City of Elizabeth and tell them that their city engineer told the residents and the council of Elizabeth that this is what should be done to develop Almora.
Yeah, so hold on, there's going to be order here, right? If you want to come up and speak, you can come up and speak. Johnny, do you have anything else you want to say?
Sure. I have the, let's see, the docket from the City of Elizabeth, the contractor that did the work, the bill number, the costs, everything that they put into it. Everything's in the Port of Public Works books. Have all of it. I have the ordinance they passed for a 42-inch sewer from Grant Avenue to City Line to Halsted Road. It's all in there. I went and did the research at the Elizabeth Public Library. All there. All for you. It will, this all will be posted online on Facebook if anybody wants anything. It's all there. Elizabeth connected their sewer to ours and pretty much sandbagged us by turning it into a combined sewer and now charging us.
So, I mean, look, once again, I'm going to, I'm going to state this, and I'm going to state this as clearly as possible, right? The NJDEP was founded in 1970, right? All of these things would have come up and would have been brought to a judge had we had gone to court. Yes, Johnny?
I think 70, he was already aware of this.
All of these things would have come up and would have, would have come up during discovery and would have come into play with a judge's decision. Once again, a judge could and would rule, this is the risk, that we have done harm and cost the City of Elizabeth money and made us pay damages. Period, right? So, so the reason why you settle is because in the event where a judge found us liable, we could have paid more, right? That is, that is the risk of going to court. Go ahead, George. Yep.
So basically, yes, if we wouldn't, in front of a judge, we would settle.
No, 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 hold on. If we went, we did settle. If we went to a judge, it would have been, the ruling would have been in the judge's hands.
Correct. When you went in front of the judge, did you have any of this information at hand?
We, we knew. I, I didn't, I didn't have those documents.
Did you, did you at least have the articles?
You asked a question, you're going to let me answer. We knew that a connection was made. We knew it was a 42-inch connection. We knew where it was made. So that, that, you know, we're not denying that that was done. What we're saying is, there was never an agreement at the time that would be
It wasn't going to be
Oh, my Johnny, you want to come back up at the end? You can. No, I'm trying to have some order here. So, excuse me, Mr. Durkle, you're allowed to yell up here, though. Got it. Thank you. Go ahead. George, please.
Did you know who made the connection? Was it Roselle Park or was it Elizabeth?
Roselle, Roselle Park brought the connection to its border and City of Elizabeth brought it to the Roselle Park connection.
So we had our connection there first?
I don't remember the exact time, but I think we had our connection there first.
But going back to my question, did you have at least the newspaper articles as evidence when you went in front of the judge?
Newspaper articles are, are not evidence.
Okay, well, what he has are official documents. Did you have those then?
I did not.
Okay, so you basically went in front of a judge and settled the case without having all of the information at hand, which is what you're saying?
No, that's what you're saying.
All right, so did you have all of the information at hand when you went in front of the judge?
Had the information at hand that we needed for a decision to be made about the settlement.
Correct. Did you have the information that he just brought to light?
Okay.
Showing who made the connection, by who, and how the whole procedure went. This, basically, we had our pipe, Elizabeth connected their storm water pipe to ours. So they're the ones that took that burden. And then later on, turned it into a sewer, a sewer pipe.
Two questions for you, right? So Roselle Park builds this sewer system.
No, it's storm water.
Storm water system.
Okay.
It has to end somewhere in your story, right? Where would it, where would it drain out to?
Into a natural ravine.
Okay, and that natural ravine is-
A waterway that's no longer there.
Okay, was a little brook, apparently according to the documents, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be illegal right now?
Right now would be, but at the time, it went in front of the judge and the judge said it wasn't illegal.
Didn't go in front of a judge and judge didn't say it was illegal, the judge ordered a culvert to be built, is what I understood.
Well, if you don't have the paperwork in front of you, how do you know?
I just listened to the gentleman speak.
Did you read it?
Did you read it?
There's a lot more to it.
No, I understand that, but to your other point about whether or not the documents were considered, right? There is a term of art that judges deal with, which is relevancy, right? So it, not just because something exists, would a judge consider it as pertinent or relevant or important to the case? So just because that document exists, it may not be given the same weight or consideration. Elizabeth would argue that doesn't say what it pertains to say and the judge would have to make that decision.
Last time during the mayor and council meeting, you said, no evidence exists-
Of an agreement.
Of what an agreement is, or anything, an official document.
That's not what I said.
All right.
What I said to you at the last meeting was, there's been no evidence of a meeting of the minds of a written agreement between the two parties.
Okay.
Right? So my understanding is even the researcher who did an excellent job, right? Who went, has not uncovered a written agreement between the City of Elizabeth and Roselle Park that sets forth the terms, the costs, the long-term maintenance, how much water can be, right?
The reason that there is no agreement is because we put our storm water drain there. It went in front of the judge. The judge said Elizabeth could not do anything about it. They could not plug it in.
They cannot dam it up.
Correct.
Correct.
It went in front, so in order to rectify the situation, Elizabeth connected it to another pipe.
Okay.
To rectify their flooding situation.
Understand.
So they took on that burden by doing that. And then later on, this is all being happening because it's mixed storm water with sewer water. Which Elizabeth, wait, hold on. Elizabeth later on changed it to a sewer. So they're the ones that are causing the problem. Right or wrong?
Wrong.
Not by what the information that Mr. Gura found out.
So a lot has changed. The population of Roselle Park in 1910 was how many?
It would still be grandfathered in, number one.
No, it doesn't, doesn't-
And number two, they wouldn't be able, they might tell us, yes, you have to disconnect, but guess what? We wouldn't be paying the $4 million lawsuit settlement.
Not, not necessarily true. So if you had to disconnect, there is a cost being incurred by the residents of Elizabeth. I'm not here to defend the residents of Elizabeth, but they had an attorney for Elizabeth who sits there and says, they are incurring costs to treat water that comes from Roselle Park.
Which was caused by Elizabeth.
It's not caused, it's caused by God when the rain falls. That's who causes-
It's caused by Elizabeth because it's mixed with sewer water, which Elizabeth did.
Again-
Number one. Number two, if he didn't have the information to go in front of a judge-
Let me finish, let me finish.
He didn't have the information in, in front of a judge, why are we settling? He didn't have any of the information.
There was-
That's legal malpractice.
It's not legal malpractice, sir.
Once again, once again.
There's another gentleman walking up to, to speak, so I'm gonna pay him the respect, okay? And when you come up, I'll give you the same respect.
Once again.
I'm just trying to, to, so-
I want to reiterate, once a lawsuit is filed, right? Whatever happened in 1978, it is all taken into consideration when a judge makes this judgment as to whether or not things have changed, as whether or not the population of Roselle Park has changed, as there's more storm water flows. The, the case that they are making is that the situation has become untenable for the City of Elizabeth and Roselle Park needs to do something about it. And a judge could take that under consideration, a judge could not. But once, once we go to lawsuit, it's all in their hands. And he could say, look, it is what it is in 1978. Now the DEP is charging the City of Elizabeth for this, the game has changed and Roselle Park needs to pay their price. These are all the risks when you go to, when you go to court. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you for having this meeting and thank you always for being respectful with me, as I always try to be with you.
Yep.
So what I really would like to say is first, thank you for listening, I think, and trying to rectify what I think is a problem. But what seems obvious to me and what I've thought from the beginning is I think you are a victim of severely bad advice, both in legal advice, perhaps in, I don't know what it is. It seems like there's a tremendous amount of information which has come out very quickly. And you getting the advice to keep the meeting secret, getting the advice to not inform the public, this all seems like really bad advice. Now you, as a person, I don't really know you, but I think that you want to do a decent job. I think that you care about the community and you have deep roots here.
Yep.
Those are my feelings about you.
Yep.
But ultimately, what I would like to see is you putting the community first.
Yep.
And not always capitulating to the people next to you and asking them the right way.
Yep.
You perhaps should get advice from them and then make your own decisions.
Yeah.
And perhaps get new people to get advice from. Because the advice seems at the very least to be incredibly suspicious.
Yep.
And it makes you look bad because you're taking the advice.
Yep.
Thank you once again.
Yeah, so just two, two things, Chris. So I appreciate that. And, and I do want to have the lawyers talk about the logistics of how this happened and why it happened in closed session. I'm not going to say in secret, but in closed session. I will say, just, I don't mean to laugh about it, but we did change lawyers in between and both lawyers shared this view, right? So it is something, you know, I, I admit freely, Chris, I'm not a lawyer. I don't have a JD, right? So I, we employ these folks and, you know, I, I trust what they say and I'll let Mike and Joe talk about some of the processes.
I just wanted to bring up another point of why is this at, ahead now, right? So a combined sewer system has multiple problems, right? When it rains, when there's increased water, there is discharges because the system can't handle it. And those discharges go into rivers and streams and the state and the federal government has ordered, New Jersey in particular, where CSOs exist, Elizabeth being one of them, that they have to fix that, right? We, Roselle Park, are part of that system. So if you didn't disconnect and you didn't settle, you would still be in a position, and one of the things suggested was that if you stayed on the system, then you're going to have to pay a big portion of what they're going to have to pay to fix their system to comply. And the reason why I bring that up is they've had this system, as you've all pointed out, for a while. But they're now forced to do things because the rules and regulations related to storm water continually change for the benefit of the residents, right? So what was proper to have in, prior to this culvert being built, it was purely acceptable to have an open riverbed except in storm water. But then that wasn't sufficient in 1914 and 1915, so they had to develop more and put a road system in and build a culvert and systems continued to grow. The population in Roselle Park in 1910 is going to be less than it is now. So the amount of water, if such an agreement existed and what you put into it, is now further increased by a further built-out storm system. All those factors get weighed into a judge. He doesn't just look at documents from 1914 or 1923 and say, sorry, Elizabeth, you made a bad choice 100 years ago. He looks at the equity, right? The thing that is missed is we did not get pulled into a criminal court. We did not get pulled into the family court, the juvenile court, the municipal court, or the civil court. We got pulled into the chancery court. It is a totally different animal, right? The judge is much more powerful. There is no jury. They decide it. They decide it on a very quick timeline. Anyone involved in a lawsuit, don't care what it is, they are four years, five years, six years long to get to a jury trial. In chancery, it's less than a year. From the time the lawsuit's filed, you don't have a lot of time. And the judge is empowered by the state of New Jersey to make decisions like this. To sit there and say, what is fair? It's the name of the court. It's an equity court. And fairness will be. We may not like it. We may not like it. But Elizabeth is being charged to treat Roselle Park's storm water. So that meter, whether you stayed on it, don't stay on it, you were going to pay for it. The amount was going to be left up to a judge. It, it, it does, but it doesn't control. You know, to, understand, but it's not a controlling point. Potentially and probably not, though. It's, it's, it's not. What's really the more thing is the currents. You do know, sir. You do know.
Well, Chris, but, but Chris, so here's the thing. Here, here's where, here's where you're not wrong, right? Had we gone to court, right, and would, sorry, had we gone to trial and said, look, we've got this piece of evidence- Yeah, so, so, agreed, but here's where, I just want to, so just two things I want to hit on, right? Here, here, two things I want to hit on, right? So I want to go back to why, I, I don't, I don't like the word secret, right? Because I don't think, I'll say this again, so this, but this is where, fair enough. But logically, right? If, if we felt that our best negotiating position was to talk about this in public, of course, I would love to avoid this last-minute surprise. Right, but, but, but Mike, so can we talk about why we talk about these things in closed session, right? Just tears straight from the horse's mouth?
Certainly, because we're in the middle of negotiations and you don't negotiate in public. If we had had the discussions in public about negotiating stance, then Elizabeth would know where the council and the mayor were.
I, I-
Mayor, the state, state law-
I understand, Chris. I, I, we are, I mean, we are obligated to listen to the advice of our lawyers, right? And, and in certain cases, especially more recently, they've gotten pretty aggressive about this. It's not, it's not, it's not out of the ordinary that like council people get fined personally, right? For not listening to the advice of lawyers, like-
Or for discussing what was discussed in closed session outside. The closed, litigation is one of those things that state law allows you to discuss in executive session because you are discussing strategy, tactics, negotiation provisions.
But, but here's, here's- Understood. And, and I can tell you, you might not agree with it, right? But the calculus that I made, right, and not just me, council made, right, was there's a ton of, that we've discussed tonight, right? There's facts on Elizabeth's side, there's facts on our side. Had we gone to a judge, there's risks on both ends, right? There's the upside of maybe we would have, would have had to pay nothing, right? There's the downside of maybe we had to pay $20 million, right? We made the most informed decision we could because, look, as George put on Facebook, right? I may not be the biggest, I may not be the biggest ratepayer, but I'm also a taxpayer here and I'm a ratepayer here, right? You know, we do, we all own houses in Roselle Park. We all pay water bills, like, we, we have skin in the game too. But I, I do want to, I want to talk on a positive note once again. This is, so Mike and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, right? Had we gone to court, the bare minimum, I believe the judge signals is we would have had to disconnect from the sewer system.
Absolutely.
Right? So, so let's, let's put that aside for a second, right? We, we would have had to have disconnected, right? And I want to hear, I want Kevin to talk about why we chose that route. But putting that aside for a second, the thing that I think there's a lot of consternation about is the fees, right? And the back pay, right? Most of that is getting covered by the state now, right? So it's not fun that this has to get paid regardless, but the Roselle Park taxpayer will bear significantly less of that based on the recent developments, which is good. But I think it's fair to say, I think, based on your guys' best guess, right? I don't think we would have got out unscathed completely in terms of payment in the rears.
Correct, Mayor. So assuming that, even assuming there was an agreement, a written agreement that said you can dump into our system, signed in 1923. At that time, there were no sewer processing fees being charged because the joint meeting didn't build their first sewer plant until 1934. So a judge is going, in equity, is going to look at that and say, okay, even if there was an agreement, but the agreement didn't include them paying your sewer treatment fees. That's not what the judge would have considered fair. And there are a couple of theories in the equity court. One is unjust enrichment. The court would consider that unjust enrichment. You're dumping into their system, they're paying for it. And there's another one, a Latin term called quantum meruit. They're providing a service for you and they're entitled to be paid for it. So that's a type of thing that would happen in, in the equity court, even if there was a written agreement that says you can dump into here forever, which there is not.
So just, just real quick, before we go any further, and I'm happy to take other public commentary. Cindy, what are you saying? We should wipe something away? Okay, whatever. Oh, oh, can I just, I want to have just Kevin touch on the logistics of, of why the water's flowing? Why, why the separation is happening this way, right? Because I know, Kevin, there were some, actually council members too, who said, you know, maybe there were some shorter routes, maybe there were some other routes we could have taken. Can you talk to us a little bit about why that route was selected and how it was the cheapest option?
There we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, so the, the route that was chosen, it was actually looked at. There's several routes looked at over the course of several years with different options as far as methods for construction. When we look at storm water, we tend to choose underground pipe systems to keep the water underground out of sight. A couple of different options that were initially looked at were overland flow. There's a couple of options with pump stations. All that, you know, costs a lot more money than we ended up coming with now, which was part of the agreement. And the initial part, our initial path for that agreement was taking a route all the way down Route 28, which is a state highway. As you, maybe I know if you go into Elizabeth, you get closer to Orchard Avenue, there's a big hill.
Just real quick, Kevin, before we go into the multiple options through Elizabeth, why was that Elizabeth, so it's flowing into Elizabeth River now, correct?
Correct.
Why was that the closest one? Was that the easiest one to build to? What were some of the other options? Forget about going through, forget about the options going through Elizabeth. What were the other towns we could have gone through or other routes?
From a, from a state permitting standpoint, there's really no other routes. Looking at the geography, the, the whole area and the whole county, the flow from the areas west of Galloping Hill and north of Route 28 all generally flow towards the Elizabeth River historically.
Got it.
So the state would look back historically and say, where the overland flow was going, it was piped, that's where you got to keep it going.
So this is new news for me, which is good, good context, right? Because we have, we already have the Essex County Joint Sewer and, and Rawaway Valley. There was no other potential, the, the state might not have permitted us for any of those options or probably would not have permitted us-
Yes.
Based on the fact that it historically flows through Elizabeth.
Yeah, it would have been a very difficult process.
Okay. So keep going.
So, yeah, so we, we chose a route through Route 28 instead of the initial route which had us going all the way to 28 to Elizabeth River. There's a large hill there, so the costs of construction just to get through that part would be astronomical, which would drive, you know, the overall price and the price of the residents up, which would require actually tunneling through. There's actually a current storm main there that just was tunnelled through back in the 50s. We would have to basically do the same thing because the pipe would be about 40 to 50 people a grade. So looking at a couple of different scenarios, the route was chosen to go down Orchard and kind of mimics some of the route that the current, the combined system goes through now. So we'll have a maintenance discharge point out to Elizabeth River. But the route that we chose basically allows for a, a system that is relatively shallow, which lowers the cost for construction and runs on a gravity system. So the maintenance and, and future repairs of any, you know, systems of the, of the storm system would be very minimal. So that's from an economical standpoint and just from a logistics standpoint of construction, that was a route that was more favorable to the borough.
Just real quick, Chris, one of, yeah, just-
I don't know their entire city, but their north part of it, west portion of the city, which we run through with our system, is combined. I believe the majority of Elizabeth always has, does have combined systems.
They're, they are. Well, so the, so the EPA allows for, yeah, thanks. The EPA allows, so this is how this whole thing- The EPA allows, so this is how this whole thing came up, right? So keep me if I'm, keep me honest here, Joe. So the EPA basically says, this system affects, what are the 150,000 people in Elizabeth, right? So they do a calculation based on flows for that 150,000 people. They got overage charges because the EPA does not count, nor will it count, our stormwater specifically, right? So basically, when they started getting those overage charges and they tracked the overage charges coming from Roseau Park, that's when they said, Roseau Park, you need to pony up.
So when there's, to your point, when.
That seems hugely unfair. That seems like they're filling up their quota with their stormwater.
No, so, so. So what, what happens in a combined system is when there's a strong storm and an excess of stormwater, the system can't handle it with the sewage. And then it discharges in breakpoints, right? So it'll illegally discharge, you know, untreated, it'll.
What John has said.
It'll illegally discharge into it. So the EPA has said you can no longer do that or you have to fix that. And they put all these towns, and they're predominantly older municipalities, right? So large parts of Hudson County, Newark, Elizabeth have combined systems. So there's two ways to deal with it. You either separate it or you minimize the stormwater coming into it. So one of the ways Elizabeth is looking at it and beneficial is to remove Roseau Park's stormwater and then they would have less reported incidences where they discharge joint storms.
Just, fair enough, but just.
But understand, the regulations regarding draining into waterways have constantly changed.
But then we would never be on the top of.
No, but, but not necessarily because your water contributes to the discharge.
Connect their water too.
Again, again, it's not.
And then we would have to make the system anyhow.
But Chris, just, we're, we're rehashing a bunch of other topics that we already touched on, but, but just to, to answer your other question, so they do have a massive issue and they have a $80 million separation project of their own, just as an FYI. Cindy, I think you were next. Go ahead.
Okay, so I have two different things. The first one, as lawyers, I'm not a lawyer, so would you say that details are important?
Relevant, relevant details.
So we keep talking about this since, since the beginning today, keep talking, I can't remember the word you used, leach on their system or whatever the word that you used as far as, we're dumping into their system. I would think a relevant detail would be the fact that we did not, you know, illegally hook up to their system. They did that to themselves. They hooked up to our system years ago. Is that not a relevant detail that you would think a judge would take into account?
No.
No, why?
As we stated earlier, when the connection was made, there were no charges. When the connection was made, there was no DEP. When the connection was made, there were no rules promulgated in 2015.
Which is why we didn't complain about them doing it.
Where Elizabeth is directed by the DEP and to, to fix this problem, to have no more than four discharges into the river and that they are directed to disconnect other sources that are dumping into their, their system.
Right. Which I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, if you look at it, if our water is going into their water and they're getting charged, that's one thing. It's the back fines that I think is the bigger issue.
And they're the, they're the things everybody's complaining about, right?
Absolutely. And I think that that is a huge detail. Because we're saying, oh, well, we, we did this to them and it's our, no, they did it to themselves and at no point did they say, oh, this might hit us later. They did it and why wouldn't a judge take that into account when thinking about it?
Well, first, they're, they're only going back a certain number of years because they only put a meter in the pit.
Well, if they went back far enough, we were part of Elizabeth. Little history lesson, we were Elizabeth. Then we became Union and we only became Roseau Park in 1901.
Think of this way.
So if 1910, this occurred.
10 years ago, they, they put a meter in the system so they could measure and, and they've been after the borough for 10 years to fix the problem and, and to pay them. And this isn't a solution that this administration rushed into. Prior administration, and I may butcher the last name, Mayor Hokinson and his counsel commissioned a study with their engineer at the time in 2017 to come up with, how do we disconnect solutions as well? And as the mayor indicated, they were all too expensive and we, our hand hadn't been forced by a lawsuit at that time. So this isn't something that was rushed into. It's been in the works and being discussed in town for at least 10 years.
But just real quick, Cindy, I want to, because I want to hammer this home. And it's not an answer that anybody likes, it's not an answer that I like, right? There's a word, a Joe or Mike, you told me, but there's a term, basically when they put in the meter, legally, they have claim to the fees, right? Because in a judge's eye, so you're right, right? Like I'm going to play judge here, right? And this is what would have happened had we gone actually through with the lawsuit, right? You're right. Could we have presented the case that this happened in 1978, this happened in 1981, you know, we were established in 1904, whatever, right? But what also goes into a judge's decision, right, is shit changes, right? So, and, and what changed, what's really.
We also kept saying, I mean, you even said.
Can I just finish real quick, Cindy?
I just said one thing since you were. You said we didn't have any of these documents. We only had newspaper clippings. That's not true.
But just let me finish.
Okay.
This is why it's not, I don't want to say why it's not important, but, but not, it's relevant is the correct term, is because legally, right, and there's, there's, Jesus, why is the word escaping me? There's example cases of this happening, right? Precedent, thank you. Legal precedent that basically says, Elizabeth, when they put in the meter in 1913, said, whatever else we talked about before, this has changed and this became problematic for it. Roseau Park, in good faith, you need to communicate with us and come up with an agreement, right? So that's why we felt comfortable and a reasonable agreement was the $4 million versus $23 million? Because if you backtrack to that 2013 date, that's kind of the back pay there? Because our best guess was, a judge would say, yeah, you know what, you're right, there's a bunch of stuff that happened before, but Elizabeth put this on your radar, Roseau Park in 2013, and said, you need to fix this and you kicked the can down the road. So that's kind of where, in our best guess, a judge would say, whatever else happened was not totally irrelevant, but, but good background story. Elizabeth put this on your radar and said, this is your problem, Roseau Park, and you kicked the can down the road, you owe something.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. I mean, I don't really understand sewer water, so I don't understand why they couldn't have just disconnected themselves since they hooked themselves up. Unhook yourself then, but that's neither here nor there. I don't understand sewer, so.
So the problem with that solution is then you would still be stuck building the system that he's talked about to where it goes.
Right, but that's a separate charge than the $4 million.
But in the interim, where does the water go then?
In our basements, like it's been for the past few years, so what's the difference?
So side note.
There's a benefit, I know, you're going to get there. But to the point is, so in that interim, right? We will pay for using their system. And in essence, you just described together, we just described the settlement.
Right. Which was the back pay.
Okay.
Which is, we're not talking about the stuff before, we're saying, okay, you want us off your system, legally you can't just close it down because our stormwater has to go somewhere. So we're going to get off and then I'm going to say, well, you got to use our system, why are you trying to get off? So you got to pass.
Okay.
That's the settlement. Sounds different when we talk about it that way.
But the one, the one bonus to your point is, it is a silver lining. It is, it is legitimate silver lining in all this, right? There is, when we get flash floods and storms, it is a problem on that side of town. And part of the problem is because we have bigger pipes in Roseau Park than what goes into Elizabeth, right? So now we're going to have continuous, what is it, eight inch pipes? What is it?
Probably a 42 inch pipe.
Way off. 42 inch pipes, right? So, so, so for those of us that know, it's lovingly called Lake Sherman, right? A lot of that should be alleviated post this issue, so.
I have a second part to the question, not related to this.
Sure, sure.
Where did the amount to increase come from? Because just trying to do the math and I just can't grasp where it's coming from. I just kind of Googled a little bit. We have about 5,000 homes.
Yep.
Give or take.
Yep.
If you divide the $4 million, well, $4 million by 11 years, it's like $368,000 a year. Divide that by 5,000 homes, should be an increase of like $72 a year. Why did our sewer bill double? On average, maybe an extra $400, $500 per household over the course of 11 years comes to about $23 million.
Yes. So, so I'll, I'll take a crack at some of that, the missing pieces, right? So it's, you're right, there's 11 year horizon in the back pay, but we also do owe, we came up with a rate for the flows, right? So that meter's there. So just like we pay Essex County or whatever else, our flows, we're going to pay something to Elizabeth. So that's the piece also that we have to consider. What else is in there, Ken? Also, just to, it's, it is also not as cut and dry of take the bill divided by 5,000 houses, right? As an example, right, there's.
Plus the businesses, I didn't even.
Sure, and apartment complexes, right? Not even the ones that you guys hate me for. The ones that have been here since the 1960s, you know?
Which should be less than $72.
When the budget, when the budget was prepared and done, it was all guesstimates still because the lawsuit was not settled. So originally, there was talks that it was going to be roughly $4 million, but only paid over eight years, so that would be $500,000 alone just for the back pay. And it was estimated about $300,000 going forward. So we had a budget for the city of Elizabeth payment, $800,000 in this. The soar is not based on household, it's based on water consumption.
Right.
And that's how the rate was struck. With the other increases and these other sewage authorities and we also had other payments to make to the joint meeting for capital projects that they were undertaking.
I, the reason I was asking was because I was wondering, when I multiplied it out, it did come to about $23 million, not including the businesses, the apartment complex, et cetera. We're only paying them four and they initially asked for 23. Is that where we came up with the initial doubling?
So once again.
For the 23.
So once again, good news is, we did this year's rates off an estimate, right? We'll have actual numbers to project for this year. So forget about state aid, it would have come down next year one way or the other. Now that we have this state aid, it's going to come down significantly, right? Definitely next year, we're hoping this year, right? Should everything work out. So we should be back to a more normal place next year in terms of sewer bills. And the last piece I want to say is like, not that there's any, you know, like solace in this, like a, a big bill sucks, right? A big bill sucks. But we are not allowed to raise the rates of the sewer bill unless we have some cost, right? So people think like New Jersey has all these slush funds. We don't have them on a local level, right? Legally, by the auditors, your rates have stayed the same for the last 12 years, right? So again, like I'm not saying like, hey, we gave you 12 years of no increase, but like those things do catch up when you can't do the incremental increases year over year. Does that make sense?
I mean, it does make sense, right? You know, for you or I, mine doubled $400. For you or I, that might not be.
Yeah.
That sucks, but it's not going to make or break my life.
Yeah.
There's plenty of people in Roseau Park, there's plenty of senior citizens that have only pensions, only social security. $800 is a big deal.
No disagreements.
They might not be eating just to save up to save for their sewer bill.
No disagreements there.
So are you going to say that we will not have another bill due in November?
So I cannot say that tonight. We are working furiously to figure out just how the money is getting to us from the state of New Jersey. The goal is to not have anybody pay for the second sewer bill, right? So, sorry? If you, if you already, if you already paid for it, we're going to have a mechanism. So, so let's just assume for a second, best case scenario, you only have one sewer bill this year that you already paid, right? We think the people who have prepaid are probably in like the 40 to 50 range, right? The hope is, Ken's sweating right now because I'm, none of this is fully baked, but the hope is, assuming that we can cut out that second payment, if you paid, you can either come and get a check back for what you paid or you can credit it to next year's sewer bill. That's the hope, right? Nothing's final yet, but we're, we're working on it and, and things are, I'm going to keep yelling at Ken and Andrew until they make it work, so.
I just hope that you're more transparent, more communication, especially for the people that this is literally do or die.
No disagreements.
$400 in a couple, mine was significantly cheaper than some people's, but.
No disagreement here. And can I say also something we've learned in the process, which RJ's here, RJ's a perfect example, sorry to call you out.
No, RJ is.
But we, hi, RJ Kucherka. So, so, so I think one thing that we've learned through this is also other towns, I mean, look, our sewer rate's been pretty low in the past, so it hasn't been painful. But other towns also, we judge it off 12 months of consumption from water, right? So if you have a pool, if you water your grass, things that don't impact the sewer, you're still getting, you're still paying off of that. We're going to change that, I think the next meeting actually, such that we will base it off of the, is it, we do it in one month or winter months, basically?
It's going to be the last three months of the year.
Last three months of the year, which is more accurate reading of just the people who use the shower, use the water, use the dishwasher. So if you water your lawn or if you have a pool, those uses of water don't impact the sewer system.
They're not going in.
And you shouldn't get dinged for that. So it is something we are going to address going forward. Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Feels good. You can boo me after, just equal it out, it's fine. Yeah, you know, did you want to come up to Mike? You come up all the time. Let Mr. Schreiber go. Yeah.
You just said it wouldn't affect it if you water your lawn and use the pool and everything, but everything's based on water consumption, no?
Yeah, so what we're saying is historically, basically, this is how you got a sewer bill before, right? Is let's just say, my, my water bill is about 30 bucks a month, right? So we take those rates from American Water, we get those readouts and then we calculate our sewer rate based off that for 12 months of the year. What we're saying is, we're just going to take that calculation and prorate it for the winter months. This way, it's an accurate read of the, the shower use, the.
We're going to take October, November, December and multiply it by four. And we would avoid the high frequency use months of, you know, June, July, August.
Right, makes sense?
So for the, for the water that predominantly does not go into the system, right? Unless you drain your pool or whatever and that, whatever.
Don't have a pool, so I don't have to worry about that.
Or irrigation, it goes into the ground, right? You avoid that on a principled stance and it's just.
But you're still, you're still using the water consum, your water bill to base your sewer.
Yes, correct.
Numbers on.
Correct.
But we're trying to change it so it's only during those months where you're probably not using it for outdoor activities. Right, so basically what we're saying is, let's, this is.
What's actually going into the sewer is what you're going to get charged for more so than what goes into your grass or what goes into.
We're dealing with ringers here, we got American Water employees, so.
So typically, typically, your water usage in January, 100% of that water usage goes down the drain.
Right.
Right? Because you're not watering your plants, you're not, right? Where in August or July, you, 100% of your water usage doesn't all go down the drain because you might have washed your sidewalk. you, 100% of your water usage doesn't all go down the drain, because you might have washed your sidewalk.
But it's still going through that meter.
But, but, we're not looking at it to calculate the sewer rate at that point in time. What we're saying is, what is your typical usage? So in January, because you're not watering your lawn, you might only use 100 gallons. But in August, because you do water your lawn, you use 130. Right? So you would get dinged for that extra 30 gallons, and pay an extra 30 gallons worth of sewage. What we're doing is, October, November, December, taking that, when you're not watering your lawn, and saying, that's your average use. We're going to multiply it by four, and that's the bill.
But to your question, we use, yeah, we use water bill as a proxy, right? We don't have, we don't have sewer meters in all the houses. I think that's relatively standard for municipalities, is that correct, Andrew and Ken?
Yes, some town, I mean, some towns do it differently, but a lot of town, but a lot of municipalities based on water consumption. Because predominantly what goes down the drain, right? Roselle Park for, I'll say decades, has based off of 12 months of usage. Because of this issue, to the mayor's point, what's come out of it is, it really isn't, it's not fair, right? The municipality is going to, going to, you know, reconcile the fact that it's really not fair, because a lot of people in town have pools. They have irrigation systems, they water their lawn, they take care of their property. And those are things you shouldn't be penalized for, right? And it shouldn't come in the form of a bill. So let's use it based off of what actually goes down the drain and impacts the system, as opposed to just keeping your property nice, right? And so that's, that's the change that will be made going forward.
On the same page?
Very good.
On the same page now? Okay, cool.
Good explanation.
Yeah, the question I had was regarding the cost to connect our own, our own line to the river. Now, I understood initially in the agreement, this is something like $20 million?
Yeah, so it's not
So the question then becomes is, obviously, that would be a capital kind of improvement over a long period of time, right?
Correct.
And could you just kind of describe the timeline in which that would likely occur?
Yeah, so, so from a funding perspective, it's going to hit different than the fees, right? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, both Kevin and Ken, the infrastructure bank is a thing in New Jersey that is basically built for these mega projects, right? And based on our size of the town, I mean, these payments can be spread out, spread out over 50 to 100 years, right? So it'll really be hopefully de minimis on the year-to-year basis, right? Is, they're, they're pretty extended timeframes, is that fair to say?
Correct, yeah, Ken may be able to better explain, but yeah, but it's, it's a longer period of payments, and they're usually very low interest, if any.
And, and, and a lot of, and a lot of
That's what I was wondering, because I'm sure Ken is always concerned about
And just, and just real quick
The cost of interest payments on bonds and everything
Based on the type of town we are and the size of town we are, a lot of times, you know, part of, like, those interests can be forgivable, right? So
Is there, is there a date, though, that when this needs to be accomplished?
When does it need to be?
January 1st, 2029.
29, it needs to be completed.
It needs to be completed. We need to be, we need to be disconnected from the City of Elizabeth system by January 1st, 2029. That date is solid, but also not, right? It is solid, it is solid in the sense that the settlement agreement with the City of Elizabeth stipulates that as the deadline. Now, if we will need state permitting to go under the highway, we need state permitting with DEP. If any of those things unduly delay the project, there are mechanisms to have a reasonable extension to that period of time, right? Where there's an iterative process between Roselle Park and Elizabeth to get this project done. The idea is to disconnect in a timely manner. And it's also, it incent, having that deadline incentivizes us, because between now and that time, we're going to pay quarterly payments to Elizabeth for that metered usage. So look, if we could get done by the end of this year, I'd love to get done by the end of this year, because it means nobody in this room will be paying quarterly
I'm going to go start digging right now.
Right? But logistically, the size of this project, you say $20 million. The reality is the project will go out to bid, right? There will be a bidding, you know, there's an estimated process, right? Depending on the final, you know, the finalization of the project and the scope, the bids will dictate, and the budget will dictate, and the infrastructure bank will dictate what the final cost is, but it will be tens of millions.
Right, now, now the $3 million that we just got, that was from like the state of New Jersey kind of general fund sort of thing?
Correct, and it's specifically for operating, so not for capital.
So it raises the question, like, let's take the example of EPA and super fund sites and cleanup or that kind of thing. Is there anything, you know, Elizabeth isn't, isn't the only city involved with this kind of joint sewer. I mean, there, I think there are eight or nine cities in New Jersey, and probably similar kinds of legislation or litigation that's been initiated through various, you know, towns because of these kinds of things. So it seems to cry out for a, a solution, given that they've made the regulations. Shouldn't they be liable to, in some kind of grandfathering of the cost of these things?
So, so as recently as this week, between Kevin's office and the administration, we've been having conversations about going we keep on saying the infrastructure bank, because they fund large projects like this for municipalities. There's a specific cutout for their CSO program. And predominantly, they're used by cities like Elizabeth or Jersey City or Bayonne or Newark, right? That have these old systems in their town. Now, the difference is, we don't have the system in there, in our town, but we're using it. We've been using it, right? For better or worse, however you get there, we've been using the system, there's no doubt about it, right? So something we're advocating for in our bond council is not here, but between the grants group that we're using at our engineering firm and our bond council, we're advocating for this to be considered a CSO project. Because of the size and scope of those projects, because they're kind of nobody's fault projects, the financing is much more attractive to, for municipalities. They're very low interest, they're over an extended period of, you have a longer payback time. Ultimately, what you pay is closer to just what the project costs, as opposed to who's making money on it, right? Who is the lender that's making money on it? So there is a carve-out, and we're trying to advocate to fold this in as a CSO project, combined sewer outflow project. As opposed to just a general capital project that's large and we're financing through the I-Bank.
And we'll also advocate for, just on top of that, right? So just like we advocated for, I didn't want to say anything, right? Until it was done, because I didn't want to promise we were going to get operating money and then come up with a donut, right? So I was, I was, Chris, I was secretive on that one, but because I, I didn't want to, you know, get everybody disappointed if I came up empty. We will also just advocate the state for direct funds for this next year. So do I, do I think we're going to get $20 million directly from the state? No, but is it feasible that we get a quarter to half of it paid, just directly, the state like, like they helped us out with the fee? Yeah, it's feasible.
Thinking at the various levels of government, I mean, obviously, there's about a half a trillion, a trillion dollars infrastructure bill at the federal level. Is there opportunities there?
So we're going to, we're going to explore all grants, yeah, we're, we're, we have, they have a grant team that's on it. And then we have, look, the goal is to try and get as much in grants as we can do. And whatever we can't fund with grants or state aid, then we'll have to send to the I-Bank and put on a credit card, basically.
And given that this is an inter-county issue, has Union County any, you know, accessibility to any of the funds? Or maybe even wants to be involved in the standpoint involves municipalities within the county?
I would say, so, you know, look, I think sewer is something they stay away from, right? I, I think, were we in a financial need for it, it's not out of the realm of possibility that they would help, you know, guarantee credit for it. They've done it with other towns. But I think that would be the limit of it, to be, I could always ask, right? But I can ask.
So bottom line, you'll explore at every level of a government.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Johnny, I know you're coming back up, but does anybody else who hasn't spoken yet want to come up before? Go ahead, oh, yeah, come on RJ.
So thank you for the, thank you for that adjustment that you're going to make, that's going to make a huge difference. I, for one, take great care and pride in my
Your lawn's beautiful.
My pride, thank you, thank you. And that's, bottom line, it's the right thing to do. So I just want to get off my chest just a couple of things. So first, some good things. One is, we got the $3 million from the states outstanding. But I think what, what bothered me, and probably what bothered many residents, was the fact that a lot of this was happening behind closed doors. And a lot of statements were made as a result of those closed doors discussions. Statements like, there was a 100-year-old handshake deal that occurred, which may not necessarily be true. We don't know that. What we do know is that we are now connected to Elizabeth's combined system. We know that, that's a fact. We have documentation that could support that we didn't connect to them, they connected to us. Albeit that it might not be admissible in any sort of court, or a judge may not accept any of that. But I think what pissed a lot of people off was the fact that we were led on to believe, over the last several months, that this was something caused by Roselle Park. And I think we know now, albeit it might be water under the bridge, no pun intended, this was at no fault to us. But it was portrayed and communicated that we connected, and you even said it tonight, that we connected to them. We did not connect to them, they connected to us, and they, they asked us to alleviate their flooding problems. So I think, not that I hope we have a next time, but I hope, but I hope that when statements are made to the public, as, as, as important as we're going to have to pay $4 million to the City of Elizabeth, that we're just a little bit more careful in how we, you know, how we portray those.
No, so RJ, fantastic, and I appreciate your commentary. Couple of things I just want to respond to. Like, so first off, on a human level, like, I've been getting beat up over this for the last like three months, right? Like, and I'm not saying woe is Joe, but like, trust me, I've gotten beat up over a lot of crap. But like, if I could have, if, if we thought it was in the best interest from our negotiating perspective to tell everybody and like warn everybody, hey, guys, it's going up, it's going up, like, people may not like me or what I do here, but I'm not a dummy, right? Like, of course, I would, I'd rather people go through the process and everybody feel like they're part of it, right? You guys could agree with it or disagree with it. Our lawyers felt like we had a better negotiating hand to play by, you know, doing this in closed session. And I feel like that's also a norm when there's a lawsuit, right? We've had other lawsuits and done that in those lawsuits. What was the other thing I was going to say? The other thing I also want to say is like, assume for a second, right, like, they connected to us, right? Water, water flows and just like, there's no well's a way that it would have gone, right? Like, water flows to Elizabeth, right? So the water is there, right? So I don't think it's as black and white as saying it's Elizabeth's fault or Roselle Park's fault, right? The runoff from Roselle Park exists, and the only way that it would not exist going towards Elizabeth is if we put in some pump and started jet streaming it up to, to wherever, rawway, right? Like, so the water is there, right? So just, I don't think it's, everybody likes to have these clean, black and white, it was Elizabeth's fault or it was Roselle Park's fault. I think that, you know, first off, nobody got murdered here, right? So I'm not pointing fingers, but I think it's a lot more gray than just saying, you know, Elizabeth made this hookup or Roselle Park made this hookup, because like, whoever made the hookup, like, Roselle Park's water's got to go somewhere, you know? Is all I have to say on the matter. So, go ahead Johnny, yeah.
Three or four quick things. I know you guys had just mentioned that you were going to do away with the water usage in the summer. Obviously, your sewer bill is a certain dollar amount, say $10 million, right? You're going to do away with your high water usage months, and you're going to base it off the winter months. So all them high water usage months, where's that money get made up? The sewer rates are going to have to increase to make up for those high water usage months.
Yeah, you're framing it incorrectly. So, so, so the rate is the rate. Some people might have to proportionally pay more.
Right, because of use, well, no, for lack of usage of other people. So other people are going to pay more.
Yeah, so, so you're 100% right.
Your $10 million, say your $10 million pot, still has to be made up.
Right, right, yes.
So if you're taking away the high dollar usage months, people will wind up paying more.
Not everyone. Not everybody, it's going to be
People will wind up paying more.
But it's more
I mean, let me get this one. It definitely is more equitable.
More equitable.
Yes, I agree with you there, but there are people that will be paying more.
We don't disagree with you, but
The people who aren't using more in the summer will actually be paying more.
So, but you agree it's more equitable?
Absolutely, I agree, 100% agree, definitely 100%
It's fairer than the current system.
Correct, but I'm letting people know that some people's water bills or sewer bills will be going up, even though they're doing away with the summer
So, right, so, so, Joe, yeah. So, so, so what's going to happen, I can tell you with assurance, the rate, the rate per gallon is going to go down next year, right? Probably very drastically, based on the
Well, it's per 100 cubic feet.
Let me finish, right? But what, your point is, if you are a user who, like me, I don't water my lawn, I don't have a pool. So proportionally, my bill's actually going to go up.
Correct, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah. So I'm just letting people know that everybody's bills will not go down because of that.
Correct, but, but the rate could, and the rate will.
Well, the
The rate's going to stay, I don't think it will go down.
And it depends on, right, and something I was going to say before, the, the way the rate is struck is cost divided by consumption. Right? So, so if, if the town's consumption goes up, right, regardless of how you calculate it.
I mean, it'd probably go down because you're not counting the summer months.
Well, look, I'm, here's, here's, I'll give you just a, for instance, right? Like, Dowling's is now open on Chestnut Street, right? They're using water right now, they weren't using water last year. So their consumption, they're going to pay more next year, regardless of what, if the rate was a dollar, is my, is my point, right? They're going to pay more, which means somebody else, if you're, if everyone else's consumption stays the same, it'll go down, right? So there's somewhat unknowns there. There's also variables with what the costs are, right? There was, there was a capital payment we had to pay for the joint, the 100-year joint meeting project, right? That won't be in play next year. We have the $3 million, we're trying to figure that out. So to your point, yes. This is, the move of, of, calculating the bill differently is not so much as to say, we're going to make everybody's bills go down. It's to say, what's the fair way to do it?
Exactly, and I agree with you there.
But, but yeah, your point taken, and the other thing that also is going to probably change in between too, is like, so pro rata, bringing up the apartment buildings too, you would imagine they're actually going to pay a larger share, because all their water is, they don't have any lawns, right? And only Ramorowski has a pool, so, and Meridia and Ramorowski are coming online, so, I, I don't know. We don't know what it's going to be, but we do think this is the fair way to do it.
Definitely it's more fair.
And, and the rate will go down, right?
And then back to the sewers. So 1930, we put in a new sewer for, I'm talking sanitary now, not storm sewer. 1930, we put a sanitary sewer into the interceptor going down Westfield Avenue. Elizabeth allowed us to do that, there's documentation for it. If you look at the Elizabeth maps, there are overflows from Elizabeth sewers into ours. Are we going to start billing them for their sewage that jumps into ours now?
I couldn't, I couldn't even, I mean
I mean, they're billing all their stuff that goes into theirs, or are we going to start?
I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that, if we're talking about a sanitary issue, because it all gets treated at the joint meeting plant.
Right, but we're getting their sanitary now getting treated through our pipes.
So, so the, so the difference is
It all goes into the same place and the overflow still happens.
I'm going to be very honest with you, I can't in an educated way answer that question right now. What I can say is, in the joint meeting of Essex Union County, which back, I think, was the Maple, South Orange Sewer Company when it was first founded in '24 or whatever. So Elizabeth, who's, who's the biggest user by far of that system, of the, of the joint meeting system that's treated, is actually not a voting member of the joint meeting.
Because it's located in Elizabeth.
Because it's located in Elizabeth, and because they have all these nuanced pieces, and they pay a giant sum of money that's almost equivalent to the rest of the members. So to say that they're, how that all works, I can't tell you right now. I mean, I can ask the question and get, and get educated on it, but I'm not going to be able to quote it right now.
And I know there's also our original sewer that goes down Park Avenue. It's 12-inch clay pipe, that is our sanitary sewer, the original one before the new one was put in.
There's, there's, there's multiple egresses
There are laterals that from, feed from Elizabeth streets into our sewer, if it's still in fact our sewer.
But, but again, in terms of the, our assessment from the joint meeting is somewhere around 3% of the total
So that doesn't change no matter whose water goes through it.
The only way it would change is if, I guess, somebody else joined, right?
Yeah, I mean, but it's set by statute. My, my point is, is the City of Elizabeth pays a sum that is some agreed-upon amount. I couldn't tell you how it gets there. I'm imagining, and I'm assuming, so, you know, it happens, but I'm imagining that there was a calculation done by the joint meeting when all the members came together, that Roselle Park is 3.27%, or whatever the numbers are, right? Newark is this much, and Elizabeth is 53%.
Because they, they make everything focockta.
By virtue of where they're located in proximity to the treatment center.
But I, it's
You know what I mean, like, their sewage is, like, why aren't we going back at them?
Look, Johnny, there's nobody who would rather go tit-for-tat like you're proposing. I think it's something that we'll discuss, and if it's a real thing, then we'll explore that.
Also, the county, back in the 20s, '25 actually, put in storm sewers along Galping Hill Road. They flow into that same combined sewer that ours does. Why were they not litigated in a lawsuit as well?
So where's the
Why just us?
Why does the county have law, why does the county have sewers?
I know nothing about this.
There's two pipes, there's a 15 and a 12, one that comes from Fernwood Road, maybe Westfield Ave, all the way to Park Ave. And the other one comes from McGee to Park Ave, all down a county road.
Yeah, I mean, look
And water that comes out of there too, that also infiltrates, why are we the only ones that are getting dealt?
I, I, I mean, I guess, there's a lot, there's a lot of learned in the last six years. Wherever storm, wherever stormwater system is, probably, you know, I mean
If our stormwater's getting built, why isn't the county's stormwater?
Look, I, I couldn't, I couldn't even tell you, maybe there is an agreement between the county of Union and Elizabeth, I'm not either of them.
We were here, we were prepared to talk about this issue at hand.
I'm just saying that there's other issues that all are encompassed in this.
Johnny, you got, you'll get an answer from one of the two of us after.
Whatever, that's all.
That was fun, anybody else? All right, so good news, we got a ton of money from the state, your bill's going to go down. I know this sucks, we're working on it. Cool? Go ahead. So yes, so once again, we have to plan out how, so there's, George, real quick, so we have to figure out if we have to pay it all this year, right? So there's a world where the state of New Jersey says, you get $3 million and you got to pay, use it all this year? In which case, we would prepay Elizabeth, right? Or we could spread it out and pay them over a couple of years, so yes, it'll affect our operating budget in 2025.
No, so, so your, so his question was, is it going to impact any other sources of aid? No.
No, no, no.
No. No.
No.
It strictly comes from the property tax relief fund from the state, it's a whole different fund. It will not impact our state aid, it will not impact our municipal aid for roads, it is completely
So it doesn't take from anything if that's your question?
We didn't ask for it, we wouldn't get it.
Mr. Jerkell? Yes, sir. So, so Andrew and Ken are hating all this, because we haven't, we haven't figured out, we just found out about the money? Yeah, but let's assume, Mr. Jerkell, so let's assume we decide that we can forego the second payment for this year, right? Which is the plan and the hope. If you have, the plan is, if you have paid, you can come to, for anybody who's watching this in the future, this is not final yet, we'll come up with a communication. But the plan is, if you've already paid, you can come to the CFO's office and ask for a refund, or potentially use it as a credit for next year. Could, could change, but that's the plan.
Just, just for the record, you're not going to get a refund instantly if coming to the CFO's office. It has to go through the process, you'll have to complete a W-9, a purchase order will have to be cut, a resolution, so
Yeah, but we have to, like, when we got to do a, when we got to do a property tax rebate, the mayor and council has to vote on it, right?
When we figure out how it can be used, and if we can use it that way, the people who have paid November's bill will be contacted and asked if you want to leave it as a credit for next year, or